I would like all council members to please stand. And Councilmember-elect, you can stand. I am your City Clerk Janet Santos and I welcome you to the November 9th, 2020 Saginaw City Council meeting. We begin our meeting with a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Would everyone please stand and Councilmember Balls will lead us in the prayer and pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could everybody please bow their heads for a moment, please, while I say a prayer, please? In the name of God, the infinite, compassionate, and merciful, praise be to God, Lord of all the worlds, the compassionate and merciful ruler of the day of reckoning. You long do we worship, you long do we ask for help. Guide us on the straight path, the path of those who have received our grace and not the path of those who have brought down their work, nor those who wander astray. And Lord, please look after all our elected leaders and the managers of all the departments and for the whole city of Saginaw, Lord, because you know we need your prayer right now during these days. And Lord, please help our youth to understand that they don't need to be killing each other in this day. All this we ask in your name. Amen.
I'd like to remind everyone in the audience to remain quiet, refrain from speaking, and please turn off or silence your electronic devices. And tonight's council meeting follows the City Council election and it is my pleasure to announce our four new councilmember-elects. Reggie Williams, George Copeland, Michael Flores, and Monique Lamar Sylvia. And we have one re-elected member, Councilmember Annie Bench. And I ask all council-elects to please stand, get your exercise, for your oath of office tonight. Will you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support
that I will support
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of Michigan
the Constitution of the State of Michigan
and that I will faithfully perform
and that I will faithfully perform
the duties of
the duties of
City Councilmember
City Councilmember
in and for the city of Saginaw
in and for the city of Saginaw
according to the best of my ability.
according to the best of my ability.
Very good. And one by one, would you please go to the podium. Deputy Clerk Bowlesman will help you assist by signing the oath book. When you have signed your oath book, please take your assigned designated seating at your table. That special chair. Very good, very good. Thank you. I will now call the meeting to order. Deputy Clerk Bowlesman, would you please proceed with the roll call?
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Yes.
Councilmember Flores.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Copeland.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Ostache.
Present.
And Councilmember Moore.
Present.
You have nine members present.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk Bowlesman. Our first order of business tonight is the election of a mayor. I remind City Council that you can nominate yourself for the position of mayor. However, if you are nominated, you cannot vote. And this is due because the mayor position gets an additional stipend pay. So money is involved. You cannot vote for yourself if you are nominated. You cannot vote, period, if you're nominated. So at this time, I'm going to open up the floor for nominations for the position of mayor. Councilmember Bench?
I'd like to nominate Brenda Moore.
Brenda, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations for the position of mayor? Councilmember Flores?
I would like to nominate Mr. Williams.
Mr. Councilmember Williams, do you accept the nomination?
No.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for mayor? Any other nominations for the position of mayor? Last time, hearing none, nominations are closed. So our nomination for mayor is Councilmember Moore. Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll call vote?
Councilmember Balls?
Yes.
I wish you would state the name Moore. This isn't a yes or a no vote. You need to, I know it's just one candidate, but please say the name, Moore.
Okay.
Okay.
Councilmember Balls?
Yes for Moore.
Councilmember Bench?
Moore.
Councilmember Copeland?
Moore.
Councilmember Flores?
Moore.
Councilmember Ostache?
Moore.
Councilmember Scherzer?
More.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia?
More.
And Councilmember Williams?
More.
Councilmember Moore has eight yes votes.
Eight votes, that's very good. So it is my pleasure. It is my pleasure to now give our new mayor-elect the oath of office to make it official. Would you please raise your right hand, repeat after me? I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support
that I will support
the Constitution
the Constitution
of the United States
of the United States
and the Constitution
and the Constitution
of the State of Michigan
of the State of Michigan
that I will faithfully perform
that I will faithfully perform
the duties of
the duties of
mayor
mayor
in and for
in and for
the city of Saginaw
the city of Saginaw
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. Okay. Let's have you sign the oath book before we, if you can just kind of set your things here. We'll have to do some house cleaning.
Okay.
Yes. So mayor, you can sign here, print your name. Thank you, Councilwoman Williams.
You deserve to get me out of my seat now. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
As you see, we take quite precautionary measures. We wipe them down as we go. So I'd like to thank my fellow colleagues for entrusting in me this tall responsibility. We have a lot of work to do and so we're going to be about our business and we're going to take care of it. Sorry, got to get some script. Okay, next bit, uh, next, I go to the next one, right Jan? Or you do it?
Yeah, no, you take over, Madam, um, Mayor.
No, this is not like MML. Okay, our next order of business is that we need to elect the mayor pro tem. Reminding council that they may nominate themselves, okay? I'm opening the floor for nominations for mayor pro tem. Do we have any nominations?
Mayor Moore, I'd just like to point out for mayor pro tem, they can nominate themselves and they can vote for themselves for this position.
I stand corrected. The, we're asking for nominations, you can nominate yourself and you'd also vote. Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Ball?
Do we have any more nominations? Any more nominations? Any more nominations? Last time, let's do a vote, roll call.
Okay, for Councilmember Balls, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Pardon me? Does Balls accept the nomination for
I do.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Balls, did you accept the nomination?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It is now closed. We were going to voting now. Madam Clerk?
Balls?
Yes, Balls.
Councilmember Bench?
Balls.
Councilmember Copeland?
Balls.
Councilmember Flores?
Balls.
Councilmember, or Mayor Moore?
Balls.
Councilmember Ostache?
Balls.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Balls.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia? Councilmember Williams?
Balls.
We have nine to zero for Councilmember Balls as mayor pro tem.
Now, I don't know if we switch seats or, I don't know how we doing this since we in this isolation stage. Does he come to my, does he come to my right?
Yeah, I would leave him where they're at.
Okay. I do need to administer his oath of office and sign the book. So Councilmember Balls would please stand and repeat after me. He got me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support
that I will support
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of Michigan
and the Constitution of the State of Michigan
that I will faithfully perform
and I will faithfully perform
the duties of
the duties of
of the office of
the office of
mayor pro tem
mayor pro tem
in and for
in and for
the city of Saginaw
the city of Saginaw
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
Very good.
Thank you.
We'd like to congratulate the mayor pro tem, Councilmember Balls. Now, Ms. Jan, this is not a normal meeting, so I guess I go down to announcements, right?
Yes, our next order of business is announcements and I do have some, Mayor. I'd like to remind everyone that the yard waste pickup continues on your regular trash collection day. Also that City Hall will be closed this Wednesday, November 11th, for the veterans. The convenience waste station will be open this Saturday, November 14th, from 8:00 a.m. until 12:00 noon. And the next regular council meeting will be Monday, November 23rd, at 6:30 p.m. And with that, our next order of business is public input.
I'd like to welcome, I'd like to welcome all who have come and signed up to address the council tonight. Hearing for my citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly so that we don't miss what you're saying. When called to the podium, let us know if you will be speaking solely for yourself or on behalf of a group. All speakers have three minutes limit, which is tied by the clerk, so be sure to cover the main points first. We ask that you, that you present, that your presentation be courteous and respectful to the members of the public, to the citizens watching on SGTV and to the council so we can give serious considerations to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to the city staff. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Our speaker tonight is Ralph Martin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ralph Martin, live at 1215 Carroll Street, here in the wonderful city of Saginaw. First, I want to say congratulations to each and every one of you, especially those who have just been added to this nice diverse city council. I'm proud to be a member of this city. I'm here, standing here with, actually, when I, my original, coming to bring up a topic was about the Saginaw Fire Department and I have a question regarding to why is our fire department having their entrance exam for the new firefighters? The written exam is taken out in Cochville Township. I'm just hoping that someone can get back to me on that. I'm not going to dwell on that too much right now because I'm full to the, to the, to the brim with excitement and just seeing that, seeing certain persons, actually part of my family as the mayor now. So I'm just, I'm just so excited and, and I'll just get down to that later. But yeah, if someone can get back to me, I'll follow up on that. Why the Saginaw Fire Department, a written exam is being held in Cochville Township instead of a facility here in the city of Saginaw. As a retired firefighter and knowing how, how it is to take those exams, I'd really like to know the reasoning behind that and I'm sure there's probably a reasonable explanation. And as a citizen. Also, as a member of the Michigan, the Michigan Fire Inspector Society, I've been a member of that since I was fire marshal, fire investigator, fire inspector here, over 10 years. You have the honor to have, Captain Eileen Pettinger was, she was called, as far as this year, she's the, and a member of the society herself, she has been chosen out of over 600 members to be the Person of the Year as far as the safety, as safety, public safety educator of the year for the state of Michigan. This is big. I was on the call, the Zoom call for our conference is going on currently right now where we can't meet together in Lansing, in Kellogg Center, so we're meeting by Zoom. The Detroit captain, who's Chris Dixon, who is the president of the Michigan Fire Inspector Society, called me just to make sure he knew how to pronounce her name right. I was probably more excited than she probably was when she found out because I've been working with Eileen. I know how dedicated she is to this city and how well she does as far as working with youth and senior citizens. Just make me use safe. So I think you really, really, really should take this as something huge. This is like from all the way from the Upper Peninsula to Detroit to Grand Rapids, she was the one chosen out of all of those. Now, what I'm really excited about is to say congratulations to my cousins, my sister cousin, your new mayor, Brenda Flaymore. Madam Mayor, I am just so happy, I'm so full, I can't even hardly speak as I stand here. Your family, my Aunt Jamie, my Uncle James, my, her dad, they smiling. And I'm smiling. And you know this place would be full if it wasn't for this COVID. We love you. We got your back. Keep on doing what you're doing.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, your next order of business is remarks of council.
And tonight, we have the honor of starting with Ms. Bench.
Oh goodness, wow. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's going to be fun to get used to saying. Congratulations to our mayor and our mayor pro tem. We are very fortunate to have you serving in these positions. I want to thank everyone. I'm very happy to be here for another four years. I'm very grateful to have the opportunity to continue to serve the city of Saginaw. And I'm very glad this election is over, like many of us I'm sure are. I want to remind everybody to continue to wear your masks. I know a few of us were discussing beforehand how our COVID numbers are continuing to go up. I believe we saw almost just shy of 400 in the last 24 hours in Saginaw County alone. So please, as fatigued as we are, keep our anger masks to everybody watching at home. They work. I would like to congratulate Eileen Pettinger. She is wonderful and such an asset to the Saginaw Fire Department. And if you have the pleasure of knowing her, you know what a force of nature she is and we really are very proud of her. I also want to commend our clerk's office for their hard work and how well they handled the influx of absentee voters. We had, what, doubled, I think, our numbers at a minimum. And we still had a good turnout in person, too, so I just want to commend them, especially with the calls of, you know, recounts and suggestions of a lack of integrity with our vote. Citizens of Saginaw can have absolute confidence in our clerk's office and the dedication and the integrity that goes into training the poll workers. And on top of that, two of our council members, I believe, Councilman Ostache and Councilwoman Scherzer, were there till 4:00 a.m. with the clerk's staff collapsing on the floor on the way out. And I just want to commend them as well. I try to work the elections when I'm not on the ballot and it's a wonderful experience and especially with everybody having so many questions about how things are counted and absentee voting. It is really good to have at least two of our elected leaders who have worked the polls and can explain those things firsthand. So I just want to thank them as well for their service to our community. And that's all I have, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you so much. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and congratulations to you and Mayor Pro Tem Balls.
Thank you.
And I'd like to thank the city of Saginaw for electing me to serve for four years. I am very honored and humbled to be in this position and congratulations to my fellow councilmembers who were also elected as well. And thank you to our clerk's office and the volunteers that helped. I appreciate everyone, especially during this trying time. I would like to talk about firefighters. I do have a concern there and, Mr. Martin, I'm glad you came in and, you know, brought it to our attention. I've been doing a little research and finding out that our fire chief works and also in Cochville Township, part-time from my understanding. And have, if we're looking to hire within the city, that is where I feel we should have our testing done. It should not be held outside of the city where potential candidates could go work. And I think it's important for us to keep that integrity and that's where, when you have, when you're working dual roles in the same position, where a conflict of interest may come in. And I understand that there may be loopholes and whatnot that allow certain positions to do that, but I think it's important for the city of Saginaw for us to maintain our integrity in those positions and not have something like this happen. So again, Mr. Martin, thank you for coming in and appreciate that. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Next, I don't know which way we're going. Are we going down, up?
You can go to Councilmember Scherzer.
Councilman, Councilmember Scherzer, I'm sorry, tongue tied, the mask, the mask. Blame it on COVID.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I want to say thank you to everyone watching at home on SGTV and also those on YouTube and then in the hallway if there are some. Appreciate you being here. Mr. Martin, thank you for coming and sharing your sentiments. I too congratulate everybody for their election as well as the mayor and mayor pro tem. I want to give a huge acknowledgement to the clerk's office. I know you guys are hardworking, but you worked me so hard on that election. But it's also interesting, I've worked on elections before, but not in that capacity, more of a volunteer role. But to see the time and the commitment that you guys put in just opened up a whole different view for me. So my sorority also, if the public didn't know or fellow councilmembers didn't know, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated provided all 18 precincts, so that includes the absentee voter board and the clerk's office, breakfast, lunch, snacks, dinner, treats, sweets, you name it, pop, coffee, all day. Because I, we wanted to make sure that everything was taken care of and that all of them, especially during this election, understood the importance of appreciation and that we valued their service. So thank you to the clerk's office. I also just want to share my love in Greekdom of Councilman Copage, Copage?
Copeland.
Copeland, oh, I'm thinking of somebody else. I'm sorry, Copeland. Joined Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated like two days after the election. So I appreciate you, I understand the hard work. Been, myself for quite a while now. But it is so great to have another fellow Greek of the divine line at the council table and in council chair that's not been done before and totally appreciate your hard work, so congratulations. Other than that, please wear a mask. It's up nationwide, it's up in the state of Michigan and it's up tremendously here in Saginaw, so please wear your mask. That's all I have.
Thank you. newest, Mr. Copeland?
Good evening. I would just like to say congratulations, Mayor Moore, Mayor Pro Tem Balls. It is such an honor and a privilege to serve on the Saginaw City Council. I would like to say thank you again to our city clerk's office. I think I have taken pride in having conversations with people and their, when I hear those comments about the election, I can say that Saginaw County, the city of Saginaw, we can trust our numbers and I think that is commendable of the hard work that you all have put into this election. I would also like to thank the citizens of Saginaw. The reality is, I'm a young man and you took a risk on me. And I want to say thank you for entrusting me because it sent a message, not only to the city, but this nation, that you are supporting the next generation. And as I said earlier, I really believe that right now we're in a pivotal time where it's a generation that is willing to take up the torch and continue to fight for our city and continue to work for our city. And I, when I said in this campaign about accountability and integrity, I am, want you to, I'm going to uphold that and please, 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 I want you to know how humble and thankful I am for this opportunity. Also, I want to say thank you to my grandfather, who is 99 years old and has lived in the city of Saginaw for over 70 years. So he understands this moment of having his 27-year-old grandson sitting on the city council of the city of Saginaw. So I truly do not take this moment lightly and I say thank you again. As everyone has stated, please wear your mask, please wear your mask. Also, continue, do not stop. I am a man of faith, so I am going to say do not stop praying for our city and do not stop praying for our nation. Thank you again for this time.
Thank you. Ms. Scherzer?
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to give honor to God for me sitting here today and to my family, to the council, congratulations to our today, and to my family, to the council, congratulations to our new mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and I'm just kind of almost lost for words because it's been a long road, and I think, I'm sorry, I think some of the people that have supported me down through the years, I just wish they were here to see that. And so to the family of Mr. Al Lovelace, the family of Mr. Al Holliday, the family of Terry Sangster, and the family of Mr. Bob Martin, I would like to send a shout out that I'm sitting here because of them. My mother couldn't make it here today, evangelist Patricia Lamar, and I'd just like to thank all my family, many of them are sitting in here today, and I'd like to thank the city of Saginaw for having faith and voting me in, and I still will remain the same even from the times I have ran before, I am your voice, I do not sit here alone, I sit here as a city of Saginaw, that's how I want to sit here. I know I have my own opinion, but I am going to always take in the opinion of the city of Saginaw. I thank everyone out in the hallway, I thank everyone in television land, I also like to thank the clerk and the clerk's office for the tremendous job that they have done. I will not be long-winded, because when you give a minister a mic, you ask for trouble. So thank you all so very much, and again, congratulations to all of the city council members and the new members, I look forward to working with you all, it may not be easy to work with me, but it's gonna be fun, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Flores.
All right, well, thank you so much. First, I want to thank my son Elliot Michael Holmes, who has been an amazing child throughout this entire experience, I'm sure he's not watching on TV, and I told him not to come because it would be too boring for him, and he would just be in the corner playing his Nintendo Switch. But congratulations to all the new members, congratulations to the members that got voted back on, congratulations to Mayor Moore and to Pro Tem Balls, and to everybody that's been an asset along this way in my journey to getting into this seat. And so, you know, I have a lot of congratulations to the city of Saginaw and the voters there, because this is something that's very special, that we have a new council that is going to be so dedicated to the city of Saginaw and is willing to bring about a certain amount of change that they're not necessarily used to. And so this is a very exciting time, and even former council members, mine, thank you for coming and thank you for being here, and thank you for continuing to be an asset to the rest of us who need a little bit of onboarding, and I appreciate you being here, it speaks volumes of your character. You know, 49.49% of the city showed up, so that's one in every two people, so we really have a good understanding of what the people wanted here. And I'm excited to work with the city staff, I'm excited to work with the city manager, I'm excited to work with everybody that is willing to work in the best interest of Saginaw. So the people of the city of Saginaw are demanding change, and we are demanding that we do things in a way that is a little bit different than what is comfortable, but that's gonna be okay, because we have a lot of potential and we have a lot of resources to be able to get us to that next level. So I'm excited for this, the three amigos here, what I like to call them, because we are all newer folk, I'm excited for police reform, land reform, and being able to open up assets that haven't traditionally been opened up to other folks, and just looking at the promise of what this election brings. We as a nation have been through a lot in these last four years, and it's exciting to press the restart button and to get working and to get forward and to have people have a certain amount of romanticism with civic government, so I'm excited for all that. And again, with the mask effort, we need to continue to wear our masks, I have people at home that I told to stay home because I'm too afraid for them to be here, and this is a real pandemic, this is a real issue that we need to continue to be on top of. The best way that we can do that is with mask wearing and then testing, so I plan on doing a whole testing platform at the end of it, thank you.
Mr. Ostage.
Thank you, mayor, new mayor. First of all, I do want to congratulate all the candidates, and it's kind of fun to sit here and see the three of you, the relationships that you've built through the process, maybe that just kind of naturally happens, Councilwoman Scherzer and I went through the same process, so I understand how you feel, so congratulations to you, congratulations to my good colleague there, Brenda Moore, our new mayor, and Mr. Balls, it's been a pleasure to work with you all. So one of the things I want to talk about too is working the polls, we had extra funds this year for the meals that were to be delivered, but it was nice and gracious that Autumn's sorority stepped in and picked up the tab for all of the food. I was delivering food all over the city that day, and thanks for the folks that are working the polls if you're watching, because it took us three hours just for breakfast, lunch, and then dinner, so it was three hours every time we would run around the city, so thanks for your patience as we tried to get everything delivered. And I want to just mention what Councilwoman Scherzer said, it really is an experience to see everything start to come in through the precincts, how it comes in, how it is securely tied, and the whole process of how all the audit and its multiple, more than duplicated efforts and checks and balances that are watching the polls and the ballots come in, so I did want to mention that as well. Another thing I wanted to talk about too is thanking Mr. Martin for coming tonight and speaking to us, I too, like Reggie, will be interested in seeing the report and seeing what's happening here, and also to my good friend Eileen, the programs that she has put together in this city and the percentages of safety that she has brought to folks' homes with fire drills, it's been a little challenging, I talked to her recently with COVID, but she has found ways to keep that program going, so congratulations to my good friend Eileen, and we will do coffee soon, I had to kind of cancel my last coffee date on her, but that's okay, I told her I'll be back. And that's all I have, mayor, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Tim Balls.
Thank you, good evening, everybody, I'd like to thank everybody for being here at the city council meeting, and I'd like to definitely thank the new council members for wanting to be involved in the city of Saginaw council, and to, you know, I think it's a beautiful thing to have all the young people sitting down at that end of the table, you know, kind of remind me when you're at home and you're having dinner, they make the yam on set at the little table, and that's all right though, because y'all gonna be at this table too, we just here to keep the lights on so the younger people can come up and do the job. I'd like to personally thank you guys for voting for me, I really appreciate that, and to Brenda, I want to congratulate you for being the mayor, you always had that mayor type attitude, I've been knowing Brenda for, yeah, over 55 years, and I remember her being the cheerleader at Holden's, at Holden Swimming Pool, and she's always been the type of person to take charge, I remember her telling me to get out of the damn water because I was in the, I couldn't even swim, so hopefully that won't happen again. But all seriousness, I think that we ought to look at this situation with the people doing the testing in Cottsville, I don't, you know, the city manager approved of that or anything, I had anything to do with that, but you know, the optics of that just don't look that good for people in the city of Saginaw, we need to be more inviting to our city and I'm looking forward to the managers comment on that. But to the city clerk, thank you for a well-run election, I'd like to personally thank everybody in America for voting, we had a record turnout, and I'm sure we've had a record turnout here in Saginaw, because everybody knew the importance of this election. Every election year, you hear all the people say this is the most important election that you will ever vote for in your life, and if this is not one, I hate to tell you which one would be worse than this, but thank God, our prayers has been answered, and I'm looking forward to the new administration and new things to happen to the United States of America and maybe even to the city of Saginaw and the state of Michigan. So I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to have those comments, Ms. Mayor, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Well, I want to thank everyone, our new council people, I welcome you. To my cousin, much love. Eileen, you know, you always was my hero, now you done made public on me, so you truly are my hero. I'm sure that, for my public speaker that we did have, I'm sure that the city manager will be getting in touch with you to let you know what is going on, that is a concern. But what really struck me was, the city council has been good for the past eight years, so I want to make, I stand to correct the statement, the newcomers are going to add compliment to us, okay? And I'm praying that the newcomers get involved with the municipal league so that you can understand how it is and what you have to do to get to the next level. I'm excited about the three new people, a lot of potential sits in front of me, I'm not gonna agree with Michael, I'm not the oldest one, but yet I am, sitting up here at this table, and even when they come to the table, I just want my goal, and has always been, even when I was president as the municipal league, has been unity, unity. We will not, we will not not have unity, that is the only thing I want out of this council, besides work, because in order for us to be a good council, and in order for us to show the community, it's no more talking, y'all, it's all about us doing the work, and if you're not committed to do the work, then sometimes I tell people, take another look, this is not a lecture, I don't want anybody to say that she is just going, no, I don't go along to get along, Michael is right, I worked hard to get to where I am, I didn't get here by cutthroat, I didn't get here by backstabbing, talking about people, I got here because I did the work. When I got chosen for city council, understand me well, I am a servant, I serve the community, the community does not serve me. I know that I've got off on a tangent, but I needed to get that said, because I want to move forward with our city and make our city better than it is, it is getting there, but it's gonna take the nine of us. Thank you so much. That's that MML spear there. Next.
Mayor, we are now at remarks from the city manager.
Yes, city manager.
First, congratulations to Mayor Moore and Mayor Pro Tem Balls, I think I've been working with Brenda for about six years now, and I'll tell you that Mayor Moore has always put in a lot of effort to learn, appreciate that, so any council member, and I think the ones who have been in council can attest to it, if you have any questions about any issues, budget, audit, anything, any department, just contact my office and we'll get you information that you need or put you in contact with people that can help you or get you that information. I understand that now it's a little, not a little, a lot different than from when we typically do this, typically we set up a lot of meetings when we have new council members or re-elected council members, we set up one-on-one meetings, we set up with department heads, we give tours of most of our buildings with COVID-19, we do have restricted access to some of our buildings like the water treatment plant and wastewater treatment, some of the other buildings, I'm sure you can understand that staff is very limited, and we're trying to reduce as much exposure as we can, but as we move further, we can get those things, and if there is anyone that you would like to meet with, if we can set it up safely, we'll do it for you, so just contact my office and we can do that. We can do things with WebEx or Zoom or something like that too, if that's what you'd like to do. And I agree, so that we do have a lot of things to work on, but I'll tell you some things that we are having issues with now, is hiring people, especially for water and wastewater, water treatment is one of the most important things that we do, I know a lot of people talk about what's important, but water treatment affects and impacts the health and safety of our entire county, because we provide water, treated water to almost all of Saginaw County and part of Bay County, and people are not going into those positions like they used to. So that's gonna be a real issue, I think, going forward for the city, and that's something that we're gonna need to address and have probably assistance from council as we try to change some of those positions, but that is very important, and not to undermine any other departments, but water and wastewater impacts significantly the health and safety of our community, and you can tell because the communities have had issues with water and wastewater treatment that has profound impact, so just wanted to mention that because I've been working with our water treatment or director of our water and wastewater plants, and that's something that we've been talking about recently. So congratulations to everyone who's newly elected, as I said, just contact my office if you have questions, or we'll set things up for you as we move forward. And I would also echo the thanks to our election workers, it's always difficult to recruit workers for election staff, and COVID-19 made the task even more difficult this year. Thank you also to our council members who did serve as election workers this year, I know, I saw everybody coming in for their training, so appreciate that assistance. And the changes in the election law and process also made the clerk's office much busier this year than in past elections, so thanks to all of our election workers, the clerk's staff, and city clerk Janet Santos for the work that they did administering the election in the city. We'll get more information about the testing for council, but I could tell you right now, setting up these large group testing events and things like that is very difficult at this time, so I'm sure that COVID concerns are prevalent in those areas for all of our testing in the city right now. I also wanted to mention our mutual aid contracts, which if new council members, if you haven't seen that, the mutual aid contracts are just agreements that we have with other communities to assist for specifically police and fire services, so both departments have mutual aid agreements with our surrounding communities, so you may often Saginaw Police Department or Saginaw Fire Department vehicles in our neighboring jurisdictions, we rely on one another to assist with significant incidents or when one of us has limited staffing, and this has been especially important over the last 10 to 15 years as local units have experienced reduced funding. The Saginaw Fire Department provided mutual aid for structured fires twice yesterday on Sunday in Spalding Township and Buena Vista Township, and for the year, the fire department has provided mutual aid to other communities 14 times and has received mutual aid 11 times. These mutual aid calls include regular mutual aid and we have automatic mutual aid with Buena Vista Township. These calls illustrate a fair balance of aid provided and received and emphasizes the importance of working with our neighbors, so I wanted to update you on that and advise that's why you may see those vehicles in other local units. And the final item I wanted to just mention to council for your discussion is our council meetings for the rest of the year, so we talked about that at the last meeting, and we set up this layout for our council meeting that we had last week, last two weeks ago, we had a hybrid meeting where we had some members here and some members at home virtually, and the reason for that is with the law that was passed after January 1st, we have to have that ability to do that, although we can only have a hybrid meeting if an individual that would like to be at home has a medical condition, is in the military service, or there's a state and local, state or local state of emergency, so those are the three areas that we can. For the rest of this year, we could have virtual meetings, we can have in-person meetings, or we could have hybrid meetings, I think the staff's preference would be to either be all virtual or all in-person, but we could have that option. So I just wanted to pose that to council because it's really your decision what, where you would like you would like to go for the rest of the year. And with that, that concludes the management update.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager?
No questions, but a comment?
Yes.
Just a comment on what Tim was just talking about. So, Tim, the hybrid meeting went really well. I mean, the visuals were there, but it was really hard to hear. And so I actually went back the next day, like I always do, and listened to the council meeting. So if we're all going to be in agreement to be here, then I would then just prefer to be here. But if we don't and we all want to be virtual, then I would go with that, too. So my vote would be either-or, what the majority would like to do.
One thing with the hybrid meetings, so that was a test, and I know council member Ostash, Scherzer, and Williams were at home. So we did note that. I think one of you mentioned it during the meeting that it was a little bit hard to hear. So for those kind of meetings, we were going to order another microphone for the laptop because that was part of our setup. The laptop was here. So we do plan to address it. And again, I will thank the council members who came the last time and the ones who were at home, because it was important, I think, to test that, to get the test run. But hopefully, we can address that with that extra microphone.
And another comment, too, just hats off to the IT department. I mean, I do work in IT, so I know the networking issues they struggle with. And but, so that explains why we were having a hard time hearing was the mic, and other than that, it was fine. Yeah. Thanks.
Any more questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Copeland, did you have a question?
I'm sorry. You know what? I can't see. Y'all gotta do something. I mean, in and out, we take our signs and turn them up. So I'm sorry, we got a step, so I'm so sorry.
I just wanted clarification. Earlier in your comments, you were talking about testing. Were you regarding COVID testing in the city of Saginaw?
No, employee testing. So we have, most of our employees take tests prior to working for the city. So that's the testing I was referring to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No, we have tests, Mr. Copeland. The tests are skills. I'm sorry. Anyone else?
Mayor, your next order of business is the consent agenda.
The consent agenda has been available on City Hall and on our city webpage and on W, I'm sorry, on SGTV channel 191. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda with items leaving room for exceptions.
Sorry, I didn't catch the voices.
Okay, you gotta say it a little louder.
And who gave the second?
Autumn.
With no exceptions, let's do, let's do voting on the item, on the agenda.
Here, did you call for exceptions?
Excuse me?
Did you call for exceptions?
Yes, I did. I said when the motion was put on the floor. When I first stated it, do you have an exception?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. I don't have a question, but I just have a question, not an exception. Attorney, can I do that? Or do I have to accept?
I think you still need to accept it to ask.
Okay. Exception, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, because I'm gonna come back and I'm gonna ask for questions anyway, Mr. Ostash.
Exception for number three.
Is that three?
Yep, number three.
Thank you.
There was a motion moved that needed to be amended, including item three as an exception. Mr. Balls, you called for the motion. Can I get that motion amended to include, to include what Mr. Ostash?
Mayor, no, no. Mayor Moore, the motion is with the exceptions. The exception was made to item number three.
Okay, so he added...
So you have your motion in your second, accepting item number three.
We're good.
Yes.
We're good, thank you.
Now you can call for a vote.
I need a roll call. Are we doing roll call?
No, Mayor.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Madam Clerk?
So that motion is approved. We have one exception by Ostash, council member Ostash. It's item number three. Approve the introduction of the proposed amendments to the council rules of order of the city of Saginaw.
So my question is, it's probably more of a question for the attorney in our council rules. I know that we've done this so that we are in alignment with the recent ruling from our governor, changing the rules for the Open Meetings Act. After the end of the year, because this would go through the end of the year, December 31st, would we then have to amend our rules at the beginning of the year again to put them back to where they used to be without that governor's?
No. So this is actually to bring it in line with Act 228 of this year, which is something that the legislature adopted with regard to amending the Open Meetings Act, because the governor's orders with regard to virtual meetings were effectively voided by the Michigan Supreme Court. So the legislature adopted amendments to the OMA, which allows for us to continue virtual meetings through the end of the year for any reason, and then through next year for limited specific reasons. And the amendments to the council rules of order reflect that, those changes that allow for hybrid meetings or potentially virtual meetings if there's a going into next year. There's language within those amendments that specifically sunset certain of those clauses at the end of next year. So we won't need to reamend unless the legislature does something else with the Open Meetings Act between now and...
Yeah, thanks for the clarification. And I'm gonna restate a little bit what I said for the record, is that I understand that her orders, the Michigan Supreme Court did not uphold them. So the legislature then did create a bill that the governor signed. So that's the piece I was talking about. I just didn't know that if we got to the end of the year, if we'd have to reverse that. Thank you for that clarification.
Need you to make a motion to accept.
Okay, make a motion to accept consent, excuse me, consent agenda, item number three.
Support. It's been moved and supported. It was supported by Mayor Protem Balls. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It has passed. Madam Clerk?
Next order of business is board commission and committee reports.
Do we have any, any city boards or commission reports from any of the council people newly elect? Don't worry, you gonna get on some boards and councils as well.
I can tell you this, I'm on the zoning board of appeals, and we have had no cases. So we have had no meetings otherwise. I'd have something to report. Thanks.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. We are now at ordinance introduction. We do have one tonight. It's to amend certain sections of 153, 460 through 491 of chapter 153 zoning regulations of Title 15 land usage.
I'll move.
Need a motion? Who's second?
Who?
It's sort of hard understanding in the man's soul.
It is. I don't see lips move or...
Now let's raise our hand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I hope I'm looking at the right ones. That I did have several questions. I'll put my glasses on, it may help. I believe that's in regards to the parking and different vehicles on the property, et cetera. Am I correct?
This is strictly dealing with amending the zoning ordinance as it relates to portable storage containers, shipping containers.
All right.
Councilwoman, was your question?
No questions on that, because I had the wrong one.
Okay. Okay. Do we have any more? Any more questions or comments or concerns? Hearing none, I need a motion to introduce this new ordinance.
Mayor, you do have a motion and a second.
Okay, so we need to vote.
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? This will be laid over in quarters into the zoning act. Madam Clerk?
Your next order of business is resolutions, and we do have one this evening, is to approve the city's annual apportionment of $7,259 for the Saginaw area stormwater authority budget for fiscal year 2021.
Need a motion to adopt?
Bench moves.
It's been moved in second. Any questions? Hearing none, all those, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Mayor, you are now at miscellaneous business.
We are now at unfinished business. Miscellaneous, does anybody, is there any other business that anyone would like to talk about? Yes, ma'am.
It's actually not business. I'm so sorry. Well, it is business. I would be remiss not to also mention my late sister Pamela Jordan, who supported me so much. So I wanted to put that in there.
All right. Thank you so much. You're welcome. Anyone else?
Ostash?
Mayor, it's just a question for the manager. I didn't know whether to bring it up under manager's report or under here, but the other day I was driving down on Michigan Avenue, and a while ago, there was a market that was coming in, fresh blood. Is there any information on that? Are they still thinking of that, or?
We can get an update from the developers on that. They were working on a, they had a DEQ grant that they were working on some of the issues with.
Okay.
But everything has slowed down because of COVID, but I can get a timeframe on that and see, you know, what they're looking at, the developer is the property owner, so maybe just delayed, but we'll get council an update for that.
Yeah, the Eagle, Eagle stuff does make sense because it's close to the river. Yeah, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Manager, I was asked to ask you this question. And the question is, is it legal to have a pet pig in your home in the city of Saginaw?
We'll research for that, too.
Thank you. I'm sorry. No found funny, but it's, it's...
It's real. It's real. I mean, we got chickens running around. It's real.
Yes, very much.
We'll put that on our follow-up list. So for our new council members, what we do at the council meeting is when we have those kind of requests, our clerk puts that together, and then we'll get that to the staff that, you know, whether it's something like that, we'll get it to the planning staff, and then we'll get a memo back to all of council before the next meeting.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And will we get a memo in regards to the fire testing as well?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I'd like to thank everyone. Need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Who would be moved by?
Scherzer. Bench moved.
Supported by bench.
Bench supported. Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? To adjourn.